Don't talk too closely. You can go on. You're tall enough.
Yeah.
But also with that, we can get the other ones. We got that robe you put on. Summer cakes the other day about we want grand food. I said, my God, yes. Is it ready to go there?
I just picture your thought or turn it on.
We are right here. And then I'd like to follow order. The child was ready to be birthed December eight. The man finds approximately ten or two. With that, I'd like to have a prayer to swing. I'd like to ask Councilman Redcorn to give us a prayer today. The current meeting, your food drops. Don't they all want to hear? He's still mad about that. They want to say, I haven't had a day. What can what can they is in their last year, that we are next year. Uh, we can see that's only as we can see. It's a very much a big question. I need the one in your red cell. They wanted me to act quick. That's what I told them. All I'll choose is that for the time. We take care of your gift, not just a great movement state. We do the right decisions. We pray for all our peace of mind. I think that's it. Let it say that our peace of mind, counsel, families and children, grandchildren. We take care of that people board. That's the same thing. I thought that probably I should call everyone a couple of all the saints. You know. Like a road call is.
Mr. David Morris?
Here.
Second church is just.
President.
Councilman Curry. Councilman Curry. Councilman Redhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Redhorn? Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Rebar?
Present. Present.
It's here.
A present.
Can you turn off, turn or fix your mic? Councilman Rebar? You're up.
Can you hear me?
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Can you see this? Wait, he's what? Say it.
Now, present.
Okay.
Councilman Shackleton?
President.
Chairman Wong?
President.
Chairman Wong.
Yes, thank you. I'd love to talk to the council about our agenda. There's a couple of items you may try to add to your indulgence with. One of them is a dance or meetings next year. And Linnae, is that in your packet?
No, that is, that was moved to the next regular meeting, but we do have the one angle to the date under business.
Okay, and that coordinates that point. The next effort that I have is we have one issue that has a time sense of your document with it. And it's actually with Warrior and the University of College. They were looking at going after a grant proposal. The company is with the university that would like to have a, a letter in that we would be interested in them doing this program. With that, that's only time sense of your document I have. The application from the production Warrior and University has to be turned in by the twentieth. It would your indulgence, I'd like to look at that and that into the big business of that. I am full of seed. And the next is I'd like to talk to the council about preparing a date to meet our general counsel next week. They are in Washington and I think Tuesday is the day that they're looking at. It's coming in and updating the council on their performance and deliverance contracts. Those are the three items that I had. Is there anything else Linnae that would need it? Does that cover those posting talks we talked about? Okay, so we'll move the dates into the twenty first. That's where we do it. So we can leave that where it's going from the twenty first. Counselor, is there anything else you would like to add to that? Here and now, I'd like to go right into the big business. Item four A, letter of support for Department of Energy and KU. Stephen O'Leary.
Hello. I, I, I can't see if Bill Lynn is here with us. So we're, we're here as part of the, the DOE team. We've been working with you guys for the last couple of years on a project in which we're looking for critical minerals in the Osage Nation. And we have partnered with five states in the region. Iowa, Nebraska, Missouri, and Oklahoma, including Kansas. We're, we're after drilling an exploratory hole in eastern Osage. The DOE requested that we provide a proof of concept with an instrument that we're testing in the subsurface that can be used in exploring for critical minerals that are used in all forms of technology. But they have requested a proof of concept in the eastern portion of the Osage Territory. And we're here to ask for the council's blessing and, and pursuing that, that hole in the, in the eastern part of your territory there. I can provide, I can provide additional details if you guys would like.
Yes, I'd like to turn to the council this time, Stephen. This was a project and they already received four where they have come in. I'd like to address my counsel and courage. One, one of your, the, the council, do you have any questions on the effort in which they're looking at today? Here and now, I do want you to project that it's a ongoing.
Can I hit my hand up?
Yes, Councilman Rivera, I need you to call him out. Please, Councilman Rivera.
Thank you. We have, I was, I served on the Osage Mineral Council four. And I remember, well, no, I don't remember, but it was brought to my attention that Chairman Yates, back two years ago this month, was introduced to this effort. But it has never been discussed by the mineral council. In two years, we've never discussed this issue. So I have a lot of questions. Bill Lynn called me yesterday evening and told me just a quick overview of, of what, why you're here today. And yeah, I have, I have a lot of questions. I'd like to know what, I'd like to know what, what, what it is you're doing really. He told me that you all were looking for to drill a well that could be utilized to run cores, to, to pull cores out of in search of in identification of rare earth minerals, maybe like lithium.
Yep.
That's something I think the mineral state had studied nineteen twenty to some degree. But with today's technology, I understand, you know, the, in, in the, the value of these rare earth minerals, the importance of, of pursuing this. I don't know anything about it, nor anything about the process, the tools used. Who's going to drill the well? Who's going to own the well? Who's going to assume the liability of the well? Whether or not you're going to have an oil and gas lease? Who will? What if you encounter oil and gas production? What, who's going to equip the well? Who's going to own the rare earth minerals? Who's going to own the data derived from it? Is it going to be confidential information? Is it going to be proprietary or being owned by us, shared by us? And I, I guess really from my perspective and with all due respect, I appreciate you being here. And, and I'm very interested in what you're up to. But it's, it's not only really the meaning, and I was on the council for four years, but there's four of us new members that's, that probably don't even know what it is we're talking about. So you, I guess you, I guess I'm going to ask you to, if you're prepared to, 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 to explain to us who you are and what you're doing and why you're here.
Yeah.
So with that, I, I'll yield back to the chairman and, and I appreciate the opportunity and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Council, Stephen, would you please commit to that request?
Yes, yes. So I, I don't have a PowerPoint to show you, but we will be down around the nineteenth. So as, as I kind of outlined things now, if you guys would like more information on the nineteenth, we'll be in that area and we'd be happy to meet you in person as well. So the, the DOE project, we, we submitted a proposal to the DOE towards the end of twenty nineteen. At that time, we had approached all the states in the area. We'd also approached the, the Osage Nation. We'd been in contact with Bill Lynn at the time. Everybody jumped on board and, and but we were fortunate enough to receive one of the awards from the DOE to explore for critical minerals, rare earth elements, other, other elements in the periodic table that are important for technology, smartphones, renewable energies, all sorts of things. But we received one of those awards that was focused upon coal and strata associated with coal. So strata just immediately below and immediately above. So the project is, is at this stage in its development is just focused on doing a recon within the mid continent, spanning all of those various states and tribal nations that are within those states, including the Osage Territory. We're looking at both in situ rock that's, that's still in the outcrop, still in the subsurface. We're looking at that stuff. We're also looking at, at waste piles, mine tailing piles, fly ash deposits from coal combustion recyclers. We're looking at all kinds of stuff to evaluate whether there is a sufficient amount of critical mineral material for us to go in and do something with. So it, it boosts not only the regional economic vitality, but it cleans up the environment. At the same time, we get rid of all these old legacy waste piles. Now, what we're doing in, in Osage or this portion of the research, it is, it is closely tied to an instrument that is used by the oil industry. It's, it's a very rare instrument. But you lower it down the hole and it gives you an elemental composition of the rock as you're going down the hole. And a couple of the elements that it will, will tell us about are gadolinium. It's a rare earth element and titanium. And our idea is that if we can evaluate the gadolinium content of the rock, that it can be used as a proxy for other critical minerals in the subsurface. So where we have high concentrations of gadolinium, it, it, it would be logical for us to presume that there are high concentrations of other elements. So we are targeting a location, a brand new hole, in this case, to where we would drill a hole. Within that hole, we would stop at one point in our drilling process to collect a core. So we'd get two to three hundred feet of drill core from the subsurface. We would then use the instrument, this downhole instrument to log that well as you would with any other petrophysical data like gadolinium or the, the gamma ray and neutron resistivity that the oil industry uses. It's, it would be similar to that process, but we would get the downhole elemental data. We would then evaluate the physical core from that same hole. We would use various mass specs and handheld instrumentation to actually get true value from the core. And then that value, that data from the drill core would then be compared to the instruments data that we dropped down the hole. And from there, we'd be able to go back to the DOE, say, here's our proof of concept. This instrument can be used in exploring for these elements throughout the entire mid continent globally. We could just go and poke a hole in the ground, drop the instrument down, it'll tell us if there are critical minerals in the subsurface. So this is one of three holes. We have another hole in northeastern Kansas. And we have a, the third hole that we're targeting will be somewhere along the, the south central Iowa and to north central Missouri border. So we'll have three holes that kind of span the entire area that's being evaluated. That elemental data will then be put into a subsurface model that has upwards of ninety thousand oil wells that were correlating from Iowa, Des Moines, down to Tulsa. It encompasses the Osage Nation and encompasses eastern Kansas, all of these states. So it's going to go into a three D subsurface model to where we can, we can kind of correlate, just like you would do for exploration of hydrocarbons, oil, natural gas. But in this case, we'll model it for critical minerals. Figure out where on the subsurface they're located. We can then look at that and say, well, that in the subsurface was mined and the waste piles from that mining operation decades ago is sitting at the surface over here. Let's go check that out. Let's reclaim all that mine waste and clean up that area and get rid of that. So we're, we're at this point in the research, simply doing recon, collecting data. And if we can demonstrate to the DOE that there's, there's promising resources here, critical minerals in our area, then we can go on to phase two of the research. Phase two is a nine point two million dollar award, I believe. From there, we would develop a workforce plan. How would we train people in our territory? We would look into methods for processing. Let's say we have mine waste at the surface that we want to clean up. How would we process that? How would we clean it up? What would we do? So not only are we dealing with, with the legacy waste piles, but also evaluating how would we pursue something that's in the subsurface at depth, like a thousand feet down? Could we, could we extract these resources from brines that come to the surface? The wastewater that comes out of the wells? Can we refine those and, and extract critical minerals from the wastewater? So that's, that's what phase two would be.
And if, if I may say, and, and council member Rivera, you had asked about the end use for the well. My name, first of all, is Jennifer Rainey. I've worked at the survey for about ten years now in energy research. Just to give you some perspective on what the use has been for other similar wells that we've drilled for research studies. It really is what is most used for you and for the council. What you feel would be beneficial for your community? What knowledge would you like to see from this spot? We can make, we can utilize this in a way that is a most benefit to everybody involved. One of the beautiful things about working for the survey is that we are a neutral third party. We're not a regulatory body. We can't enforce anything. This is surely a resource, research driven. And you would ask about ownership. All of this is public information. Not anything is private. By definition, through the DOE, the well will not belong to the Department of Energy. It does not belong to us. At the conclusion of this project, we will transfer that ownership over to you so we can reclaim the ground however you see fit. Or we can perhaps repurpose the well in a way that would be beneficial, perhaps for either oil and gas or water characterization. It's completely up to you. So the, we have a lot of flexibility here. And so your perspectives and your interests in it are of great importance to us. And so we are receptive to your recommendations as well.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, Councilman Rivera.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for that information as enlightening. The couple more questions. We'll be helping prove up a technology, I guess for somebody. Somebody already has the technology and they're wanting to test it. Will we share any benefit from that? Will we be rewarded? Have any ownership in this technology that we're proving up for somebody else? That's one question. And then I'd also like to know why, why our area in eastern Osage County was chosen? What is it that's unique about this one area that you want to see a test well drilled in? Why, why is this one location area? Why has it been chosen?
Okay, so the, the instrument, I'm actually going to let our colleague Eva Kuhn here explain the instrument. She's our petrophysicist. Are you able to answer the question about that?
Yes, and so I, I'll answer the first part and use the stretching graph for, it'll answer the location part. So good morning, everyone. My name is Eva Kuhn. I'm a scientist here at the survey as well. I, my expertise is petrophysics, which is understanding rock properties. I'm looking for proxies to understand resource assessment. So this tool is, this instrument is used regularly in the oil and gas industry. Maybe not regularly, it's more of an advanced tool. So it's a geochemical tool and it lets us know which elements are within the rock. But then also within the borehole environment, but also oil and gas based off of their properties as well. So technically, the way the instrument works, it's proven to, it's proven to work generally in the subsurface. It's open information. There's publications surrounding it. Now for the critical mineral assessment, there's also publications elsewhere where they've used it in the, some IODP projects as well. So with regarding the benefit, the, the benefit of it in that sense is in, in testing it in our area and testing it for the specific elements. It is just having access to that information and it would be new information for our area for the, for whatever, whichever elements we're able to use the instrument to characterize it with. So access to that information, even though it's general information, not everyone's going to go looking for it. But it's early access to good scientific information. That's one of the major benefits. And you know, in, when that information is published, it would be cited that, you know, we were allowed access to test this instrument in the subsurface within your area.
Okay. That's all I have for now. We'd like to know what it is about the eastern part of Osage County.
Yes, with, with regards to the eastern part of Osage. So we have this, this partnership regionally and we've tried our best to give every partner some value from the, the information that's coming from this instrument that, that will help both territories and states. But with regards to, to eastern Osage, the reason we've, we've requested Bill assist us in finding a location specifically in the eastern part is that we are more or less, we're paying for a thousand feet of logging. And the value of, of eastern Osage is that we know that there are many coals that have been mined to the east of you in Washington and Awata Counties, that whole area in northeast of Tulsa. Lots of mine activity there at the surface. Now those coals are in the subsurface in eastern Osage. The value of logging that part of the succession is that it's at depth. We can log the entire interval, which gives us a story as to what's going on with the, the elemental compositions, the chemistry of those rocks. And those can be correlated back to the surface. So we can have one bulk analyses of the entire succession. The other important thing about eastern Osage is that the instrument has to be used beneath the water table. So targeting eastern Osage gives us a location also in which we are below the water table. And it allows us to log the entire succession all the way down into the top of the Mississippi. So there's the geological importance of that area that allows us to log the most amount of the section and evaluate the most amount of coal and be beneath the water table.
Okay, so this will all be open hole logging that you're talking about.
Yes.
There'll be no completion of the well, no casing set and cemented, that sort of thing. Once you all do the logging in the corn, you're done. And you're willing to turn the well over to somebody else or to plug the well and restore the surface.
Yes, we will, we will either plug the well, restore the surface, or we will sign the well over to you guys and allow you to complete it.
Well, okay, well, when you say you guys, we are the mineral council. We represent headright owners that own the minerals that held in trust by the federal government. So when you say turn over to us, we don't have a legal opinion as to whether or not we can own and operate wells yet. That's something we've, we've been discussing for, I don't know, at, at least four or five years. I don't know that we can assume that liability. But assuming that we could, the I'd like to know who, who is going to finance this, this project from A to Z? Say, say for instance, we don't mind you coming in and doing what you're doing. We probably couldn't stop you from doing this if we wanted to. If you wanted to make an arrangement with a current operator that's got an oil and gas lease, there's some, you know, we call less ease. And you wanted to log one of their wells with your tool, we would be all in favor of it and we would probably demand a copy of it or the Bureau of Indian Affairs would on our behalf. So this may require some special permitting, I'm not sure. But I guess, I guess my concern is my, you know, it'd be, you could do this without us. That's what I'm saying. And we as a body of a mineral council, I don't know that, that you need our permission to do what you're wanting to do. So I'm kind of puzzled about that. I guess I'm puzzled why, why you're here and, and you need us. Thank you.
If I can offer quickly, so what, one reason we appreciate that we entered into this partnership back in twenty twenty with the Osage Nation is that there is a, an enormous data set and a valuable body of knowledge that we can utilize in our collaboration. So having these partnerships, it supports our research and it strengthens it and it bolsters the, the whole community in, in sharing this volume in a way that's useful to each partner. So all, as you alluded to, all of these things are public. We will offer you any report, any bit of data that we extract from this is open for everyone. So again, this is a, a community effort and the stronger our partnerships are, the better our research will be as a whole. And again, the, the whole, the, all of the geology of the region, it has to be correlated across all of the partnerships and all landholders and all stakeholders. So by involving the Osage Nation and the Mineral Council, we feel that we are going to do a better job as researchers, working together.
I guess that's my concern, Jennifer, is that I don't, I'm not familiar with this partnership that you're talking about. As far as I can, as far as I know, we do not have a partnership with you or anybody else. You say the Osage Nation, we're an agency under the, over the Osage Nation, under the Osage Nation. So if you've done something with the executive branch of the Osage Nation, I'm not familiar with it. Then I've been on the mineral council for four and a half years and I'm not aware of any partnership with you or any other entity having to do with this technology or, or this subject matter at all. So when you're throwing around the word partnership, I don't know what you're talking about.
Absolutely. Thank you for correcting me, Councilman. We have a, a letter of engagement. I believe Bill Lynn was the one who sponsored this letter. But when we entered into this collaboration through the Department of Energy, it was merely offering services and being present. We didn't exchange any official dollars. We did have on our award, we would absolutely provide you those letters and the arrangements that we made.
Yeah, I would, I would, if we were to act, to be asked to act on anything today, I'd certainly want to see what it is you're talking about. So anything about any agreements or partnerships or letters, don't. You've not provided this council or the one before, Osage Mental Council four, with any of these documents that you just mentioned. So I would certainly want to see those. Thank you.
Absolutely. And so if it, and, and with that knowledge in hand, thank you for letting us know. I do think this would be a valuable opportunity when Stefan and the others come down in person. We would be happy to do a brief overview and introduction to the project and what our mission is and what the opportunities are, if that would be favorable to you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Council, do you have a question? Yes, Councilman Red.
I, I kind of got a sense, Bill, I don't know why any of us. Mr. Rebar, we've talked about self-producing. But that's a concern on new council, we got to take heed of that. My question is, you know, when they know where they want to drill and they know what township range and section, come back and ask for a yes or no. And they walk into the VIA and they don't need the partnership or anything like that. I don't, I don't understand it either, so. Yeah, that's my thoughts. I didn't know anything about this.
Yes, for all this specific item we're reviewing today. Is there any other question? I want to talk to our council chair.
You know, whenever they decide them down, I guess I think whatever like that, it was, I think, I would be like, have an index. Overdue, what exactly they're talking about, I don't know, grasp what they're talking about there, since that. The what they're currently doing is probably. Give us some very valuable information, what's down. Through the parts of the drilling down into layers and certain things like that. So it's things I think that. As a minerals council, we can maybe utilize some of that information, but then my colleagues talked about it. Mr. Rebar, I think they have to have a more of that understanding of exactly what was what's going to transpire. Where this was, where he's built, all the other things associated with that. But again, I'm very interested in knowing what information we were able to come up with. I think it's, it's very intriguing.
Mr. Lynn, aren't y'all just? Yes, I provided you all with an email yesterday to get you up to speed. This started in twenty nineteen with the Production Development Committee. And then uh asking for uh Osage participation in this. Uh. There's, there's an email uh where we asked. I work directly with under Lacy and we asked the chairman at that time. Uh if it was okay to me or me to work with. Uh five states and the geological surveys looking for the minerals. And so uh Mr. Rebar told me email, there's a feed in that email I provided last night. Where he asked what this was all about. So I explained it uh at that time. And uh. Anyway, it's it's all been provided to you. There's no written, there would be no resolution. This is just uh. Chairman at that time. So we in in uh December twenty nineteen threw Lacy that it's fine for me to work here. Along with the geological surveys. Now, the DOE is asking that they drill a well here to identify the minerals on our reservation. And so what they're asking for is a letter of no objection from the Mineral Council at this time. Thank you, sir. So I provided a map that shows eastern Osage. I provided a cross section from the Huskett to the Barwell Hill. That identifies the hog shooter to the top of the Mississippi for a little coal bed as long as. That's what they're asking for, the letter of no objection to the DOE. So it would be quicker, they'd like to get this done before March. If this well done, uh it would be quicker if we approached an operator and said, hey. They'd like to do this on your lease. And then they would share the information. Uh they grill the well for the coal bed, two or three hundred feet of it. Run the elemental log through it, plus they they would drill it to the top of the Mississippi. If the operator decides, yes, there's, it's going to make a well. They can take it over, make an agreement, set bypond and cement it up and they can utilize it. Now, if we did it outside, we'd still have to get a lease, some of the permit to drill. And you know how long that takes. So anyway, they're just asking for a letter of no objections that they move forward on this, which is, you know. Up to the Mineral Council. So everything I've done up to this point, since the committees were. Uh are are not in force, this straight through our chief of staff, skirt. And so I sent the email out that's, you know. I just hate flooding your emails with all this technical information. That's what I've been doing in the past. But uh anyway, uh that's where we're at, that's what they're asking for.
Yes, sir, I think you may have all of our, any time. Uh I'm I'm like to ask, to say something to the council. Uh Councilman Revard did bring up the guide item. And some of the questions he has is exactly what I'd like to have Warrior talk to us about over the uh NSF. EPC quarter effort that they're talking about, which is exactly what Councilman Revard is talking about. They are the last seat and they're going to encompass all of that. If your indulgence, I'd like for him to give us a few moments, how they want to approach it. That doesn't have the uh. They are following the. Application through their list. Uh but I think they would still like a letter uh support from us. Because all these federal entities, especially the DOE on the I C N committees that I sit on, are following that. They go to all the players in the element, you and I, or tribal steward, that they have all their. Power reach program. I think that's where we're at today, yes. But also I'd like to ask if I could have Mr. Nap say a few words, because he's got a mirror effort. That they are wanting to ask for an application that's not. They are assuming the well, well war, and I'd like for him to say that, say the thing. But if you don't mind, I give him just a few moments. I was going to add in on that, that happened in this letter, but I think. Mr. Nap, would you mind giving us an intro on an email? And you had this sent to us in the first December. And we had a schedule for the twenty first on the grant application he is going to do with T U. Uh so fill it, fill it in.
Yes. Um yeah. The application we're making is for research is different than uh than what these folks from K U are buying up. In terms of, you're not looking for any kind of new element or any kind of mineral or anything like that. But so we have. Then uh this all came up uh in the last uh summer. Here, you know, uh low-hand junkyard from two years inviting me to make a presentation. And one of the things they've been working on. Is this issue of methane emissions and abatement, capturing methane emissions. That uh are associated with uh local oil produced as well, especially there. You know, any of those states county, we have, we have any of them. And we were also working at that kind of a project. Um where we were developing a system to capture natural gas at the wellhead. And maintain a low pressure environment as well, and use that, be able to deliver that natural natural gas to market that. Was previously not able to uh be to be sold. Or to utilize that natural gas for uh other purposes, whether it's uh. Uh electric generation, whether it's transportation, some other way to the to the market. So we've been uh, we've been working with you, their, their uh. Their application is for that purpose. So to further research on our pump system and our method of capturing that natural gas, using that natural gas to lift those. In the well war, I think I mentioned something to Tolly at the summit, I've also mentioned something to Mr. Red Eagle as well as to Mr. Lynn. Uh so we recently invested a million dollars in in building the equipment and installing the systems in uh over twenty five wells on our on leases. And we would, I would like to partner to you, they're going to do the research on the pump system, help us uh measure the. And refine the efficiency of that pump, help us expand the scope of wells that we can collect to. In terms of how much fluid they produce, how much gas they need to have on them. Right now, we can take as little as one or two or three thousand cubic feet a day of gas, which. Finishing might have just been wasted if we can capture that gas and utilize the system there to market. So they're making a, they're submitting an application for funding from the National Science Foundation. To help with this, help fund this research. And part of this research will be, to the extent they're available, denying any um folks from Osage County from. You know, that may be referred by the council or through the nation uh to help uh do the work. You know, that that might be running the field as far as research and stuff like that, as well as their work down in Tulsa, at the North Campus. Uh they have equipment to specifically evaluate and help us uh expand this. A system and deploy it in Osage County. We think it will have tremendous value uh to producers in Osage County. We think it's important that that whatever natural gas is available is out there. That might be wasted because they don't want a low pressure on the well, they don't have easy access to a market, you feel like that. By developing this system, it would help that. So what to you is asking for is simply uh expression of interest. Or a letter of support that um that they can provide with their application because. Uh it is important in the context of this application that it benefit. Um tribal nations, tribal properties or indigenous people. So that's one of the reasons they're seeking it. And since we're going to do all the researching for your Osage County development, it was a, it was a valuable project. Hoping, hoping we can get a decent expression of interest from the council and allow them to receive the the application. Yeah, it's, it's a little different than what uh that we spoke about in the lab, which. If I'm like, if I'm an operator, you know how much we saw we have, they they find a a location that's on one of our leases that uh would be of interest to them. For joy, uh. Would be, would be happy to provide a location. And uh not only that, you got, not only that, we're in the process of renewing with thirty six permits. That we have to renew because of COVID, they expired, we're trying to renew those permits. Uh I'm happy to show them the permits, we already have the other nine in Rosses. If one of those is in an area that makes sense, I'm happy to to utilize one of our permits. Uh and we'll do the drilling and it will help out however we can. But I do think the the two things are are complementary, as you said, they're mirrored, but they're they're both going out to different cycles.
Yes, sir, and that is no cost to the Osage Mineral Council shareholder. That and you also would uh prescribe to allowing us the information that Councilmen are talking about. As a weekend review and also, Councilman Rick.
Uh thank you. Uh. Help me recall, T U, we talked about that before. And they were interested in. Post-plugging operations, seeing what. Is that where we're concentrating on this?
No, it's, you're right. And one of the things we presented at the summit was a device to measure. Methane emissions that might be coming from a plug well.
We, we heard that, damn.
Right, that's correct.
But this is, this is different, but we're different. But we're, so we're talking.
Thank you, sir. Council, do we have any other discussion at this time? I'd like to go back to uh. Any requests, uh? Councilman Rebar, do you have any other questions at this time?
No, I'd uh I would like to say though that the audio in the chambers is such poor quality. That I couldn't hardly understand anything that Mr. Nate had to say. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh.
Chairman, I can see outside, now you did try to, they're trying to.
Uh just for our constituents, we've got our IT department here now trying to fix that, Councilman. If you'll bear with us, let's take a short five minute break, so that we can review this. And with that, uh I'll ask for a short recess and we'll be right back with you. Councilman Curry, I documented, you get it all sort of in the. This is a pretty interesting experience. I'm going to be starting to do it.